Start this second session of our September Town Meeting. If you would be so kind as to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic where we should stand. Liberty, justice. Well, why don't we just jump right on into it? Article sixteen. Article sixteen, Amendment to the Town General Bylaws, Article two, Section one point two warrants. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and is as printed in the warrant.
Ways and means, general bylaw review.
Well, I would guess I'd like to hear from the General Bylaw Committee at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Scott Martin from the General Bylaw Review Committee. First, our vote was five zero zero in favor of this, in supporting this article. The... We're working on sixteen, right? I'm sorry. This article is, changes currently the, as outlined in the backup information, the, currently the general bylaws allows us, allows for anything other than zoning bylaws, to, articles to be submitted within forty-five, forty-five days prior to the town meeting. And we usually do not get any indication from outside our committee, what articles are being submitted. And that does not allow us time to review and properly make adjustments to the, the article so that it can be presented to the town meeting. A couple of examples of that is, is we've, we saw Article thirteen and Articles fifteen earlier in Monday night's meeting. So I would ask that, this Article sixteen asks that we be, that Article, all Articles basically, for zoning and general bylaws be submitted at the ninety day mark prior to the town meeting. And that will allow us time to properly review any article that comes before this body. So I would ask that you support this article. Are there any questions through the moderator? Thank you.
Was there any other group, any other board committee that reviewed this, who's weighed in on it? Or you're the only one, Mr. Martin? Do you know?
As I know, we are the only ones that weighed in on it.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Martin? Well, Scott, you must be a good salesman. No questions. We'll put to a vote then. Name me if you could get the poll out, please. Okay, the poll is closed. Music Theory Room, do we have a vote?
Yes, we do, Mr. Moderator. We are seven in favor, zero against, zero abstained.
Thank you. Science Lecture Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Three in favor, zero opposed, zero abstention.
Seven three. There being sixty-seven in favor. Seven opposed and three abstentions. Motion carries. Okay, Article seventeen. An amendment to the Town General Bylaws to rename the Bylaw Review Committee has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and is as withdrawn. Never mind, withdrawn, seventeen is done. Brings us to Article eighteen. An act relative to chang- changing the name of the high-rise industrial district to the innovation district in the town of Burlington. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and it is as printed in the warrant. Ms. Castner, Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you all hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. So if, I don't have a slide. But if you recall, over the last couple of years, we've done a bunch of amendments to the IH District. The IH District was created in the nineteen seventy-seven rewrite to the Burlington zoning bylaw. It is essentially was written and designed to build what we know as Seven New England Executive Park, seven hundred district. If we've all drove, driven by it, we all know it's a high-rise building. Over the last couple of years, in the amendments that we have done to change the IH District, we have also reduced the height from a hundred and fifty-five feet to ninety feet, which is only ten feet higher than the IG District, which is eighty. All, this is all dependent on how far you are from residential district. But anyway, we're not changing any of that. The reason for the change is really just to better describe the district. Every single town meeting we've come back to with the high-rise district, I get a lot of comments of, I don't want high-rise buildings, whereas it's really not any different than the, the districts that we're zoning from, in most cases, the IG District. So we put it out to the Planning Board. The Planning Board discussed a couple of different options. Member Covino also supported putting this on the warrant for this September Town Meeting. Along with the rest of the Planning Board, we thought of the IG two district, the Innovation Science District, looked at a couple of our other communities and really didn't find anything eye-opening and really wanted to try to get something that made more sense. Also was, you know, just something a little more exciting in our zoning bylaws. So we landed at the Innovation District and that's what is in front of you tonight. And if there's any questions, I, through the moderator, will certainly be happy to answer.
Okay, we'll open up the questions from the... Oh, need a recommendation from the Planning Board. Excuse me. Do we have one?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Seven zero zero.
Thank you. Any questions on this from the body?
Mr. Moderator, I also believe that land use and zoning, zoning bylaw review may have weighed in.
All right, zoning bylaw review committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Zoning bylaw review, eight zero zero with the vote.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Didn't mean to shortchange you there. Any questions from the body? Seeing none? We'll put it to a vote. Name me if you could send a poll out. Oh, Carol. Why isn't it showing up on my... Ms. Perna, do you have a question for us?
I do not. I raised my hand inadvertently and I thought I lowered it. I'll, I'll lower it. I apologize.
Well, it wasn't showing up in my list, but it shows up in the, on your picture. So I'm easily confused.
It's, it's showing on mine as a hand with, is lowered, so it's got a line through it. Sorry, no question at this time.
Well, you're, looks like you're permanently raised hand, so when I ask you if you got a question, you'll know why. Okay, Music Theory Room, could I get a vote?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Music Theory is six in favor, one against, zero abstained.
Thank you. Science Lecture Hall?
Okay, Mr. Moderator. Three in favor, zero opposed, zero abstention.
Thank you. Those two opposed? Two, three, ten. Seventy-two, three, ten. The vote being seventy-two in favor, three opposed, and ten abstentions. It is clearly a two-thirds majority and Article eighteen passes. Article nineteen. To amend zoning map and rezone property to the high-rise industrial district. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and it is as printed in the warrant. Close to the, the Planning Board, Ms. Castner. Or do we have a presentation first?
We have a presentation from the proponent. I'm happy to weigh in after if there are questions.
All right. Let's have the presentation from the opponent, please.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for allowing me to address the, the town meeting. My name is David Reinfield and I am the owner of One Ronder Way. My partner and I acquired the building about fifteen years ago and we've used the building as is for the better part of the past fifteen years, running our companies there. It's located right off of Middlesex Turnpike and it has frontage on Route ninety-five. There's a, there's a photo of it. And it's, is a forty thousand square foot building. It's zoned as an IG. And there you see it's a, we, we call it Ronder Way, but it's actually, it, it butts a series of, of Office Park Buildings that are just down the street from, from One Ronder Way. And the building has, hasn't gone through renovations yet. And we are, we have started a process of, of going, reaching out to possible investors and to develop the, the property and to sell the property and develop it as potentially life science or lab space. And so we are requesting that the General Assembly consider rezoning this property to, from IG to IH. There's some statistics on, or there's some, some details on the, on the building. The building's being marketed by Parsons, brokerage firm. And over the past nine months to a year, we've received numerous inquiries about the potential of, of developing that space into a life science or, or lab. And that's why we sat down and decided to discuss with the Planning Board to see if there's an opportunity to, to rezone the building. In the, the discussion period, the potential acquirers had really have put a very long lead time to be able to assess whether this potential property could be developed into a, a life science type building. And so what we had thought prudent to do and, and to work on was to try to minimize that uncertainty of the potential zoning of the building. There is a, as you'll note, there, there is a growing demand for office space in the life science sector in, in, and around the Boston and Route one twenty-eight area. We think that this is a, a great opportunity to really improve the property and to drive the value of the property up and thereby driving up the tax revenue base for the property. And we, we do feel that these types of categories of buildings tend to, to form clusters. And so what, you know, what if, one of the things that we're looking at is the neighbors around Ronder have gone, I think before this, this assembly, to request a, a rezoning. I think it was seventy-eight Blanchard and eighty Blanchard, but the Blanchard Buildings. And so we feel that Ronder Building sort of fits the potential profile of, you know, having a, an attractive area for development in, in the life sciences. And so, so what we, you know, I guess the, the process that we've gone by is we've, we've presented to a couple of committees prior to this, prior to today and we've run through this, this presentation. I'm happy to take any questions and, you know, with that, I guess I'll, I'll leave it to you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Reinfield. We'll get the recommendations from the relevant committees and then we'll open it up for questions from the body. So Planning Board, Ms. Castner. The recommendation from the Planning Board.
I'll send it over to Brenda to give the recommendation.
Certainly.
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you, Kristen. Mr. Moderator, we had a five-two-zero vote.
Thank you. Land Use Committee. Mr. Pearson.
Land Use voted seven zero in favor of this.
Zoning bylaw review, any comments on this one, Ms. Ellis?
Zoning bylaw review did not review this article. We have no comments on it.
Thank you. In that case, we'll open it up to questions from the body at this point. Mr. Martin, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Precinct seven. Could we ask that the, the map that the presenter put up for about three seconds be put back up so we can look at it?
Can do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I, I actually was, was getting help from, I think, Brady on presenting. Oh, there we go.
Not a problem. We're getting it up there, Mr. Reinhold.
Thank you, Brady. Thank you, Mr. Lotterer.
Okay, Ms. Newfeld, do you have a question?
Yes, can we, Felice Newfeld, Precinct three, uh, five. Can we hear why the dissenting votes on the Planning Board were made and what their issues were?
You can ask the Planning Board for further comments. Yes, we can. Either through the Planning Board or Ms. Castner, whichever of you would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We had some concerns, or some folks in, in the Planning Board had some concerns about traffic den, traffic and density. The site is already at a point two seven FAR and could go to a point five zero FAR. So with those points, there were some reservations about moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Appleport. Anything further, Ms. Newfeld?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Warren?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Warren, Precinct four. I think this is Precinct seven, if I'm not mistaken. And so if possible, I'd like to hear from any Precinct seven town meeting members that live in this area as to how they're feeling about this and how it affect, it impacts them directly. Thank you.
So if there's anyone from Precinct seven, Rob, raise your hand and we'll get to you. Mr. Miller?
Yes, I just want to know, since this is a zoning type article, why didn't the zoning bylaw review committee review this? Didn't they, did not get an opportunity to?
Excuse me, Mr. Miller. You have to speak up. I couldn't hear you clearly.
I said, since this is a zoning related article, was there some reason the zoning bylaw review committee didn't get a chance to review it?
Ms. Ellis, did you have a chance or just decided not to because it's not a change in any language?
It's not a change. The bylaw review committee just reviews articles that have to do with the language of the bylaw. So we don't review rezonings. That's what land use does, so that's why we didn't review it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Anything further, Mr. Miller?
Oh, that was, thank you.
Mr. Sacks, question?
Hi, I'm looking at this area with a aerial map over here on Google Maps and I'm often struck when I, when I drive down Wheeler Road that on one side, there was water, wetland right up to the road. And then the driveway down to Ronder Way actually goes downhill from there and it's pretty much surrounded by wetlands on all sides. Well, at least on one side. I'm just wondering two things. One is, are you planning to build a bigger building down there? And can you do what you need to do without affecting the, the wetlands that are all around there?
Mr. Reinfield, question for you.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Current plan right now is we are marketing the building to, to sell and potentially co-develop. The, I, I believe that if we were to do any potential build, we would, we would come before the, the zoning and the Planning Board to make sure that if we were to expand the footprint of the building or the, the height of the building that would be conforming. Right now, it's a forty thousand square foot building on a three and a half acre lot. You know, so, and we have hired a consulting firm to, to make sure that we are in compliance with any of the environmental issues that could potentially arise from being that close to the water and the wetlands. So, you know, it's, we certainly would respect the boundaries of the building and the wetlands around the building. And, you know, that's, that's our intention.
Thank you, Mr. Reinfield. Anything further, Mr. Sacks? Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Precinct seven. Somebody wanted to know what comments from people who live in Precinct seven. I live about three quarters of a mile from here, not very far. On one hand, I am in support of this because of the, this whole area is becoming a, a life science area. Blanchard and Wheeler seem to be a really nice place to be doing a lot of that stuff. However, I, I do have some concerns as the Planning Board talked about. Currently, Wheeler and Blanchard gets tied up getting out onto Middlesex Turnpike at, in, at night and also getting out onto South Bedford Street. So Mueller and Eugene and Cormier and our little neighborhood becomes a through street to get people out of the, this Blanchard area. There are only about a hundred homes down here and between four and six-ish or so, there are probably three hundred and fifty to four hundred cars that go through our neighborhood. Most of them ignore the stop signs. So that's my one concern. The, the concern about the swamp area, it's, it's a wonderful swampy area. And Blanchard Road should be twice as wide as it is now, but because of the swamp, you can't, and conservation land that's there, you can't make it wider. If you try to restrict traffic to have it not be able to go down Mueller or through that little back street that goes into the back parking lot of, over to IH Mart. H Mart and Market Basket and that area, um, during rush hour or times like that, it, you'd have Mueller and, uh, you'd have Wheeler and Blanchard Road. Basically a parking lot with all of the traffic trying to get onto South Bedford and Middlesex. And there just isn't anything you can do unless you want to somehow make a, uh, on-ramp to one-twenty-eight in that area somehow. But that's not going to happen. So those are my concerns. Uh, I still believe I will vote for this article, for this rezoning, only because this is all life science down that area anyway. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Kastner, do you have comments on this?
I just had a follow-up to, um, uh, John Sacks' question about protecting wetlands and just wanted to add that the, in the Planning Board discussion, we did talk quite a bit about the site. This, the building and the site itself was developed decades and decades ago before, um, we really had a lot of stormwater requirements. It also is very, very, very overparked. Um, and therefore, one of the recommendations of the Planning Board when it, when and if they do, um, or come back to the Planning Board, is to really take a hard look at the site for compensatory flood storage within the site. It's, um, to reduce some of the impervious surface. What that will do is help us with the, um, infrastructure improvements along Blanchard Road. Um, as you may know, that if you ha- if you're in the flood zone, if you, you know, fill part of it to improve and put sidewalks, um, you need to make up for it in another area. And this is a site that is quite overpaved. Um, and with the addition and ability in this district to, um, potentially add structured parking, we can hopefully get a much better site design as well as help remedy, um, some area issues with, um, additional, um, removal of impervious surface. So that was, um, something that, that was put on notice by the Planning Board and was part of the Planning Board and the recommendation of this approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kastner. Mr. Reinfeld, any comments on the, the question about traffic that you'd care to make at this point?
Um, on the, on the traffic, um, I will say, or two points. One is, um, most recently, since COVID in the past sixteen months, um, we've had very low occupancy in the building. So, um, the traffic that may have been experienced have been from either other buildings or there's a construction project right next to our building. I will say that I, I believe that the life science and lab space, um, in terms of the actual occupancy density, um, is probably less, um, dense than the way that we use the building under the I G zone um, as a, um, as a building that housed, uh, basically back office, marketing and sales. And so we, you know, I, I believe that, um, with the, with the rezoning and the redevelopment of this property, that we, we would likely not have as many, um, people parking, uh, vehicles as we had in the past. Um, that's, that's all I can say with that. Um, and I do, um, I, I, I do recall, um, the discussion that we had and the recommendation by Ms. Kastner about the, um, looking at structured parking, um, which, uh, would, would, I think, be suitable as well, uh, once we go to redevelop the property.
Nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Reinfeld. Mr. Lance, question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan Lance, Precinct One. Um, I probably should know this better, but I don't and I'm not sure if I'm the only one, so I thought I'd ask. Um, can you give a summary of the differences between the current zoning I G and the, the new zoning and the innovation district? In other words, what changes, what advantages are they gaining by the, the change? Um, in other words, what's the, the major differences?
Ms. Kastner, please.
Sure. Uh, major differences in the I H district. Um, if you recall, um, life science as a use itself is allowed by right in the I H district. As I've explained previously, there's many different special permits that come with life science that are still special permits. Hazardous material storage, which is not really hazardous, it's just any biologic falls under, um, hazardous materials. Um, also, um, the height, as I mentioned earlier, is, um, to ninety, um, uh, feet. Uh, this does fall, oh, it's, um, there are some residential parcels, um, along here that may not allow it to go to the full ninety. But, um, but anyway, uh, so a ten-foot height difference, uh, structured parking is not allowed in the I G district. What else? Uh, that is roughly, um, the, really the changes. Um, but what, as I mentioned in, previously in all of the changes we've made, um, to have kind of life science by right is something that, you know, when people look across the country for places to land, um, that's a checkmark that usually allows us to get a lot more attention. That's one of the reasons why we did move in that direction. So therefore, you know, for these sites to be rezoned in the I H, they become, although there's a lot of the uses that could happen, uh, under I G, um, they kind of move that hurdle to really put them on the map, um, for the availability of, um, life science uses, um, kind of by right, although, you know, they go through a lot of other town review, including the, um, Biosafety Commission with the Board of Health. So hopefully that helps.
Thank you. Mr. Boyven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct One. Uh, just to expand a little bit on something Ms. Kastner said. Uh, any changes to the building footprint or changes to the parking lot or changes to vehicle access would come before the Conservation Commission. Uh, we would make sure that there were no adverse effects on any surrounding wetland resource area. And also I point out that since this is already a developed, uh, lot, that any changes would also have to represent an improvement to the stormwater handling over what is currently there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyven. Ms. Hughes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I wanted to respond to Phyllis's, uh, question about, um, Precinct Seven. I'm, uh, Betsy Hughes, uh, Precinct Seven, town meeting member. Uh, we've heard a lot about, um, the development of different parcels along that part of, uh, Blanchard Road. Uh, I think, uh, the issue of traffic's been discussed enough, but that is something that is a concern. I realize we were still recovering from COVID and a lot of people aren't back to work. But the reality is that in biotech, especially in labs, people actually do go to work. So whereas, uh, that may not be the case for some of the buildings, for the buildings that end up with biotech, you will have cars associated with that. Um, there are concerns by residents, uh, along that way. There's a number of people who live in that area, right across the street, actually, from where this is being proposed, um, about wetlands, road flooding. Um, so I'm glad to hear that there's some attention being paid to that, but this is something that is a big concern. Uh, a number of people in, um, are, have talked to me about, um, concerns about safety with, uh, bio, um, biotech and, um, with the labs because things do escape from labs as we know. Uh, so there's concern about that. So hopefully we can get on that. And, um, there was a study done about priorities for sidewalks in Burlington and this street was the number-one priority, I believe, uh, for sidewalks, uh, and because of safety. There are a lot of people walking along this road now and it even, even has a bike lane, although there's no place really for it to be. But there are more people on the street. So, um, I'm hoping that as part of all of this, um, and this is probably a Planning Board thing, that there will be some requirements for putting in sidewalks along this, this area to the extent that they can do so, even if they're boardwalk kind of sidewalks. But we have people walking along the street and it is a safety hazard. And, um, that is something that also Precinct Seven, Seven constituents have had a concern about. So that pretty much sums what people have talked to me about in our district. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Parker, Precinct Seven. Um, looking at this zone, this, this particular area that abuts, uh, one-twenty-eight Route Ninety-five, uh, it's currently zoned I H for office space, which, uh, would allow for more parking and more, uh, more people than, than life sciences typically allows. I think this is one of the areas in town that, uh, you know, does need some improvement from, from a wetlands perspective, from sidewalks. And as we've seen throughout the town, it's the partnerships with the companies that end up locating there. And with all due respect to the, to the current owner, it looks like he's, um, you know, looking to sell it. Um, the best chance that we have, and this is, this is an industrial area, to get some of those, um, improvements comes with a partnership. And I think we've seen from some of the other, um, property owners in town, as they make these changes, we have a relationship with them. And that's when work, uh, really gets done. So I think, first of all, I would support this because it's in an area where we, we need, uh, we need improvement to some of these surrounding areas. And the only way that's going to happen is if something comes in new, gets, uh, approved through all of the zones and all of the, uh, committees in town. And, you know, including the Board of Health. And, and I, I hate when people, you know, start talking about escapes. We, we have some of the greatest, um, committees in town that make sure that these things don't happen. Um, the last thing we need is another empty building in town without property taxes being collected. And I think as we recover from COVID, being able to get these life science clusters going and getting people to work there at less density and less parking is a step in the right direction and I, and I would support this.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Ms. Warren?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Moderator. Um, Chris Warren, Precinct Four. Um, grew you, I believe, to Ms. Kastner. Um, I believe that the proponent mentioned that seventy-six Blanchard and eighty Blanchard, I thought he said, had come before us for, um, I H zoning, and I honestly don't remember that. Um, so I wanted clarification on that.
Um, those parcels, we were rezoned at, uh, the last town meeting that you met. Uh, I, they, yes, they were rezoned to the I H district from I G.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Manning? Rose, are you there? Not hearing you.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rose Manning, Precinct Six. So I was curious to know how many parking spaces are currently on the property and how many are being used at this time?
Ms. Kastner, is that something for you or for the proponent?
Um, I do not have the exact number. My calc- which the proponent can certainly answer. Um, from my quick calculation, it was about a, they were over by about a third of what they needed. So they were significantly over, which is why, um, of what they needed per zoning, um, which, and then if you look at a life science use, you need even fewer because our zoning calculations are, um, you know, assume a less density in the building. Um, so therefore, that's the reason we got into the compensatory flood storage and ability to actually remove pavement on the site and encouragement of removing pavement on the site and a redevelopment opportunity. But in terms of the actual number, I would defer to the proponent.
Does that answer your question, Rose, or do you want more information?
I'm just wondering how many really people park there right now. I know he said that it's not, it's partially vacated or mostly vacated. So just thinking about the amount of cars that come and go.
I, I can answer, Mr. Moderator, um, if you'd like. The, the, um, I believe that, uh, the, the number of spaces that we have striped are somewhere around two-hundred-and-thirty-five. Um, we certainly have never used two-hundred-and-thirty-five spaces, um, all at once. Uh, currently in, literally for the last sixteen months, uh, we've probably used at the most twelve to fifteen spaces. Um, right now, out of the forty thousand square feet of, um, rentable space, we have about sixteen-hundred that is being used, um, actively by a tenant that, that, um, has maybe five or six, um, cars at a time. The, I, I will, I will mention again that, uh, there is a building adjacent to our lot, um, that is under construction and some of those vehicles have been parking in our space, um, really, um, just, just at will. Uh, so that might be like twenty to thirty, uh, vehicles that is parked on our, on our property.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reinfeld.
Sure thing.
Mr. Kelly?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Per, uh, Ms. Newfeld's request, I am in Precinct Seven, but if you look at a precinct map, Seven is huge in geographical area. I'm probably further away than people in other precincts. I'm on the other side of Ambridge Street. Uh, so I'm not impacted by the traffic the way, uh, people down in, uh, Betsy Hughes area would be, or Scott Martin's area. Uh, the thing I recall from the lengthy presentation we had back in the bioscience time was that the number of actual people occupying, uh, the building is significantly less per square foot than, uh, general office space. Uh, so I'm not sure what the traffic impact can be since we don't know whether or not that building would remain or whether they would build a larger building, which they're entitled to do. But, uh, typically what happens is, uh, the bigger the building, the more parking you need, the more parking you need, the less lands you have for building and they kind of push up against one another. Structured parking could help them out of that area, but structured parking is very expensive. So they run into a cost per, per square foot area. So I, I think that there is some self, uh, limiting aspects other than the, uh, wetlands, which will keep this from being a huge parking, uh, huge traffic generator. But as I say, I defer to the people who live closer to it than I do.
Mr. Kelly? Mr. DiTucci?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Dan DiTucci Jr., Precinct Six. Uh, I'd like to, uh, move the question, please.
Oh, you can do that. Okay, the question has been moved. Is there a second on that? Wait here a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, send out a poll, Amy. Hey, could I get, uh, a music theory room votes, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator. Music theory is eight in favor, zero against, zero abstain.
What was that? How many in favor, please?
That was eight in favor, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Science lecture hall?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, three in favor, zero opposed, zero abstained.
That was six-zero-zero?
Three-zero-zero.
Three-zero-zero. Thank you. There being seventy in favor, seven opposed. There being seventy in favor, seven opposed and five abstentions. Question has been moved. So now we'll put the question to a vote. Music Theory Room, can I get a vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, we are eight in favor, zero against, zero abstained.
Eight, zero, zero. Thank you. Science Lecture Hall?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, there's three in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions.
You? There being seventy-two in favor, four opposed and eight abstentions. This is clearly a two-thirds majority. Article Nineteen passes. Congratulations, Mr. Reinfield.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Move on to Articles Twenty and Twenty-One. I assume we will discuss these two together. We will vote them separately. So could I get the planning board vote on, on these two motions, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, Article Twenty, we had a six, one, zero in favor, um, of the Wall Street rezoning. And Article Twenty-One, we had a six, one, zero unfavorable vote.
Thank you. Kastner comments on this article?
I don't have comments yet, but of course I'm here for questions if they come up after, um, Scott Weiss from the Gutierrez Company gives the, the presentation.
Okay. Land Use Committee. Mr. Pearson.
Land Use voted seven, zero for each of the articles.
Thank you. Any comments on, to make on them, Mr. Pearson?
No.
Okay. Then we'll turn to the proponent. Mr. White, are you here with us tonight?
Yes, I am, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you very much for the time. And, uh, I will, uh, go through a few slides. I'll try to make it quick. I know it's late. And, uh, this is the, uh, I believe, last item that you guys have before you this evening. Again, for the record, my name is Scott Weiss with the Gutierrez Company. Um, and, uh, as we go through this, I know the town knows a fair amount of this information. Certainly, town meeting is up to speed on a lot of this, more so, uh, than probably your, your average, um, uh, resident in the town as well. Uh, next slide, please. So just a couple of things, uh, about Warren, Articles Twenty and Twenty-One. This is another request where we, uh, are looking to modify, uh, some existing property from both the IG, the General Industrial, and the BG, the Biz, uh, General Business Zone, uh, to the IH or Innovation District, the I, I Zone. Um, and why are we doing something like this? And I think you guys are pretty well aware of this. Really, only about ten to thirty percent of office space is currently being utilized. Um, you know, that, that obviously seventy to ninety percent of it's vacant. The, uh, as many of you know, certainly any office workers know, the return to work effort, uh, and activity remains delayed. But we all recognize that employment, in-office employment levels will not likely return to pre-pandemic levels. The office space is likely going, footprints are going to shrink for many companies as, as, uh, we go forward over time. Um, and that's going to leave, uh, certainly, I know, I, I can understand some lower traffic, uh, considerations that people might appreciate, but that's going to leave some vacancies, some lower values, less people shopping and eating and dining, uh, shopping, uh, dining and staying in, in the various, uh, Burlington amenity space. Boston Cambridge and the surrounding areas is the number one life science market in the U.S., uh, and probably the number one market in the world, frankly. And we've got a, a burgeoning demand throughout the region, um, uh, that Burlington is just now starting to take advantage of. And I think as it's, uh, uh, been referenced before, much of lab work, um, certainly research efforts can't be done remotely. It requires employees in buildings. Uh, and that's a good thing. That's a good thing because it brings people in to help keep the restaurants and, and the retail, uh, establishments and the hotels in, all in business. Um, and it also keeps, uh, the tax dollars rolling in. And a lot of the efforts of this town meeting and the various boards have been recognized, uh, um, uh, over the last several years, that Burlington is now considered one of the best emerging life science clusters, uh, in the area. Uh, there are, are groups that have come in since Millipore Sigma, a building that we did, uh, Azure Clean Rooms, uh, some recent announcements of other, uh, buildings and properties we own where we're, where we're bringing in some lab and life science companies now. And, uh, that's a good thing. These actually are very, very high value, very secure, very well-managed, uh, properties. Uh, great oversight. The Board of Health has, uh, introduced and adopted, uh, you know, um, uh, new policies over the last couple of years as well. Uh, so there's a lot of control and oversight as well. The lab spaces require very long lead time to deliver. They're much more complicated buildings than, than your, uh, typical office space. And they, um, require us to start processes much earlier. Uh, an office company that's looking for, uh, space for, uh, next year or two can come to us and we can usually work with the town and deliver that in that timeframe. A lot of the life science companies, um, uh, need to look at existing buildings and existing lab spaces, uh, first because they're, in addition to delivering the space, which takes two, three, even four years, there's a certification, validation type process that goes into this. So that forces us to start, um, looking at, uh, preparing properties and buildings, uh, much earlier so that we're ready, um, for those users. So Warrant Articles Twenty and Twenty-One allows us to start those planning, planning processes now, uh, to create what, what, um, uh, would be the Wall Street Life Science Campus in this particular case. And I'll go through, uh, where the property is and why there's two separate articles. Next slide, please. Uh, so just to make sure everybody's aware, um, the Wall Street Articles, uh, that we have before us for, um, Warrant Articles Twenty and Twenty-One includes, uh, four separate parcels. One, Two, Ten and Twenty Wall Street. They're located, uh, just, uh, uh, south of I-Ninety-Five or to, to some of us older people, uh, Route One Twenty-Eight, which I still can't help referring it to that, to it that way. Um, uh, tucked in, um, on Cambridge Street, uh, um, in what is now the Qualcomm Building and, uh, some retail, the old paparazzi site, um, across the street from Wayside Commons. Um, next slide, please. So Warrant Article Twenty concerns One and Twenty Wall Street, which are the existing office building at, at, uh, One Wall Street, which is currently the Qualcomm Building, and the Twenty Wall Street, which is a medical office building, uh, the Harvard Vanguard Building. Next slide. Um, just, uh, so the, uh, One Wall Street is a six-story, uh, existing office building. And the Twenty Wall Street is a two-story medical office building. Uh, uh, some of you may have, uh, been there for, uh, doctor visits or the like, uh, at that location. Um, and, uh, the other two properties going, going beyond. To the next slide, please. Uh, Two and Ten Wall Street, as I mentioned, Two is the, um, now Tay Mc, Tay McCall, Ms. Call and Jack's Coal Fired Pizza. It's the former paparazzi building. And the, um, uh, Ten Wall Street is the small retail plaza, uh, where the framework, the old Chuck E. Cheese used to be. Um, go to the next slide, maybe you can get some images, uh, that you can look at here. That the top picture is the retail plaza, as it is currently, frameworks. Uh, there's a Dunkin' Donuts, um, uh, Reading, Reading Co-op Bank, uh, is in there. So, uh, it's currently a little less than fifty percent occupied. Uh, we do have a new tenant going in there, but that site has been, uh, and this is really why they're, they're, these are separated. That site has been very challenging. Um, that property, property was built in, in a different time. Um, since then, certainly you have Wayside Commons that has, uh, been developed. Burlington Crossroads right behind, uh, this building has been all redone. Um, there's really not a lot of destination retailers that would want to be in here. It's tucked away. People can't see it or find it. It's not very big. Um, and so it's a challenge. It's a challenge to, uh, find tenants to, to occupy this space and stay in, in this area. And we do recognize that this is part of the planning process as we go forward as to how to, uh, keep this space active and vibrant and to plan for the future. Similarly, uh, in the bottom photo is the, um, Tay Ms. Call and Jack's Coal Fired Pizza, uh, the old paparazzi building, which is actually a very, very large restaurant space. In fact, the two, the, splitting it into the two, uh, restaurants are still two very large restaurants by, by today's, uh, standards. And it too, um, was built in a different time when the only restaurants in this area was this and probably Cafe Escadrille, uh, down the street. Uh, since that time, obviously, there's a number of other restaurants throughout the area and Wayside Commons and the mall and the district and Third Ave. And, and it is a challenging environment, um, as we move forward and probably not the place for a very large restaurant footprint as we, as we have here, uh, today. Um, so, uh, what is our, our plan? If we go to the next one, um, uh, the next slide, thank you. Uh, so this is the same, um, area. The orientation's a little bit, uh, changed. What, Wall Street is on the left, Cambridge Street, uh, excuse me. One Wall Street is on the left. Cambridge Street is on the bottom of the image. And Wall Street itself, um, cuts right through the middle of, of the slide with Two, Ten and Twenty Wall Street from bottom to top on the right side. The plan here is to create a life science medical campus. We already have the medical office building at Twenty Wall Street. Life science and medical uses are great complementary uses. Um, and if we go to the next slide, the, the area is already split zoned where the area in the bluish, purplish color is today's owned, the IG or General Industrial. And the area in red is the business, um, uh, the BG zone, the general business zone. Um, our, our plan is to, is to take the, these properties and to rezone them, if we go to the next slide, and to create a, the IH or the I District, um, for the majority of the parcels and to slide the, and minimize the, um, BG zone, the general business, to just essentially the buildings on the, um, where the retail and the restaurant is. So why would we leave those, those portions out? Because those, uh, uses, the retail and restaurant are not allowed in the IH zone. So it would be, um, they would become non-conforming. It would be very difficult to put any tenants in, in that space in the, in the timeframe as we start planning, um, for the future of this as a, as a more life science, um, oriented campus. The idea for those properties is to allow over time, where there are leases in place and those tenants will remain. But we are already seeing that some of the tenants that are there today that still remain, as I mentioned, we do have one new one coming in. But, um, uh, we're not, uh, clear and don't expect renewals to continue. So it, they're not, uh, the current preferred location, uh, again, especially for, for retailers. So as we, as we plan to the future, if we go to the next slide, um, the idea is to take the one-wall building, again, on the, on the left side of this image, and to update the building, update the la, lobbies. Um, there's a tremendous amount in, in investment to the building itself to allow for lab use and life, life science use. And there's no expansion, uh, plan for that building as it's already, uh, fully built out on that site. On the right side of the image at the top, Twenty Wall Street, which is in a medical use, would remain essentially in that, in that same activity, same form. But the change, the zoning change there would allow, uh, research activities to be combined in, in conjunction with the, um, with the medical, uh, services that are, that are already provided there. And so the One and Twenty Wall Street, um, properties have been combined together in Warrant Article Twenty to be rezoned. And that seemed to be very, uh, reasonably understood and accepted. Uh, there's not significant amount of changes other than the investment to update the buildings and to allow for, um, more of the lab, life science type uses in those pro, uh, properties. And that's, uh, fully supported by, or supported by the, the Planning Board as well as Land Use, uh, as, as mentioned in their votes. Article Twenty-One includes just Two and Ten Wall Street, which are, uh, in, on the middle and bottom's right side of this image. And that's, that's where it got a little bit more complicated. Our intent here is to allow to, for the planning for the sort of eventual and slow conversion of these properties to, to allow for, um, life science activities as the retail uses, um, diminish over time, over the coming years. And, and we have vacancies. We can try to consolidate that and reduce the size of the building and plan for, uh, again, complimentary life science use, um, uh, on, on the Ten Wall Street parcel. As these retail and restaurant uses become less public-oriented destination-type uses, but over time become more amenity space for this life science medical campus, that, that would be our intent. If we can't rezone this, what would inevitably end up happening over time is the buildings will still become less desirable from a retail use and will eventually be vacated over time. And then we're left with a vacant property and trying to probably pursue something similar to this. But there'll be a period of time where there's very little value, no tax, uh, uh, revenue because the, the buildings are going to be, um, uh, vacant as, as we go forward. So we really wanted to, um, be able to be in a position to start the planning for the future now. This is a long-term process and we believe we can work cooperatively with the town as we have on multiple projects in, in the past to bring, uh, hopefully good, good, um, um, you know, positive, uh, employment opportunities, development, tax base and the like to the town. And this is just a way to step, uh, and move forward in that direction. Uh, next slide, please. And again, and this is the end. So, so, uh, hopefully I didn't take too much of, uh, your time. Again, the idea is to create this new life science cluster, uh, to help continue and grow the tax base and be able to, uh, and be able to help plan for the future, uh, um, uh, of this property and to do so cooperatively with the town as we go forward. I appreciate your, your consideration and, uh, hope to get your support. Thank you.
Okay, well, now we'll open it up to questions from the body. Mr. Glantz and Mr. Sax, your hands are up. Are they still up? Mr. Glance and Mr. Sax, your hands are up. Are they still up from the last article? Or do you have questions on these bill, this article? Mr. Glance? Oh, it must be on coffee break. Mr. Eiler?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, John Eiler, precinct six. Um, I'm, I'm glad you grouped these together because I have, uh, some similar concerns on, on both of them. Uh, so I like the proponents', uh, plan and where they're trying to go. And, and I think that's great. Uh, so that, that's all good. Uh, the concern I have is, is there may not be something they even have in mind, but I, I think it is in the unintended consequence category, uh, which is something I've mentioned in the past. Uh, and it has to do with where, uh, marijuana dispensaries, uh, can end up. Uh, so right now the zoning has BG does not allow marijuana dispensaries, whereas IG, IH and IR do. Uh, so whether it's their intent or not, uh, what we're ending up doing here is we had a well-considered region, uh, the town meeting, uh, agreed to for where dispensaries could go. Uh, and now this is moving it into an entirely additional area. So I have no issue with there being dispensaries. People want to, uh, buy it. That's fine. Uh, but I do have an issue with unintentionally expanding that area across town. Um, and I, I think the mistake is, uh, you know, we just, uh, very reasonably renamed IH to the Innovation District. I, I don't think our intention was to rename it to the Marijuana District. Uh, so, uh, and, and I, and, you know, I, I apologize for opponent for being stuck in the middle on this. What, what I would suggest as a good solution is I, I think it would make a lot of sense to have the marijuana, uh, allowed areas be just an overlay so that we specify where we want them and where we don't and not have it be attached to an Innovation District, which really has a completely separate purpose. Uh, so, uh, so that, that would be my concern on all four properties. Um, and then on the number two and 10 Wall Street, uh, I had an additional concern, which is I, I, I see the intent, which is, uh, to allow for, um, you know, the life sciences to start, uh, you know, being marketed for that as, you know, the restaurant and retail phases out perhaps. The, the concern I have is it, it, the, the way the proposed, uh, zoning is, is the parking lots are in the IH zone and the businesses are in the BG zone. And I, I understand the reason for that is, you know, that the current businesses wouldn't be allowed if the whole thing was IH or, or now I. Um, the problem I have with that is it, it, it leads to a pretty odd situation when developments are proposed that you have the parking lot in one area a- and you have the buildings in another. Uh, and as we know, you know, one of the intents of the, the IH district is there's different, uh, density requirements and parking requirements and so on. So, so splitting a single development, uh, into two zones really muddies the water on what's allowed for a development. Uh, and I, I think we've seen in the past when zoning things weren't clear, uh, it tends to lead to problems, um, uh, that, that we've had in the past. So I, I think it's a mistake to split a parcel in half. You know, certainly, um, you know, I'd be all for changing the whole, the whole thing when the time comes. I understand it may create a marketing difficulty. Uh, but I, I think the last thing we want to do is set a precedent of having a, a thing where parking lots in one zone and, and the buildings are in another. It just, it, it has trouble written all over it. Uh, so for those reasons, I, I would suggest delaying approval, uh, for all of them due to dispensary issue, uh, and, and not, not, uh, going for splitting up lots, uh, on the article 21. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator? I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I didn't know if I could just respond quickly.
Mr. Weiss, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, I, I appreciate those comments. And I think actually, uh, other than the marijuana piece, which I actually wasn't even aware of, uh, that component, um, and not something we're looking to do, but, uh, uh, understand the concern nonetheless. Um, the, just wanted to comment quickly on the, uh, split lot and, uh, I think it's Brady running the, running the show here. If he could go back one more slide backwards, um, just, just to note that there already, uh, today is a split lot. If you look, uh, at the, uh, one Wall Street building, which includes the zoning line going right through the building, uh, there's a small piece of split lot even on the two Wall Street parcel. And we, there are a number of other parcels throughout town that have split zoning just by chance and how things have taken place over the time. And so I just wanted to note that those, that, that those are today's split lots and I understand the concern. I think the planning board shared that type of concern, uh, about having a split lot and having the buildings remain in one zone and, and parking in the other. Um, I do think that the, the risk and the concern and why we felt it was important to bring it forward despite the fact that the planning board didn't support this is that the alternative approach on this ultimately ends up being, um, wait. And you're waiting for buildings and activities and uses to just die off, frankly. Um, so we, the, this kind of interim step really just allows us to, to initiate some of that planning and activity earlier on those, on those lots two and 10. So, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Ms. Castor?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just wanted to answer the marijuana question. Um, marijuana, retail marijuana dispensaries are not permitted anywhere in the town of Burlington. Um, medical marijuana dispensaries are allowed by special permit in a handful of zoning districts. IG and IH are included in that. Um, however, uh, we also put in many provisions, um, but from religious institutions and some other, um, things such as where children commonly congregate and defined that. And one of those things, you know, it's daycares, schools, play structures, athletic fields, uh, but also ice cream parlors, pediatric offices and shopping venues, the, the like. Um, and therefore, uh, medical RMD would not be allowed within a thousand feet of the nearest parcel boundary of any of those uses, which you have many, you have a couple of different pediatric uses at 20. Um, admittedly, you know, that, I mean, certainly that could change and evolve. Pediatric offices have been in that building for as long as I can remember. So I'm not sure how quickly that would happen. But, um, just kind of as a factor of just knowledge, at this point, I do not believe that a medical marijuana dispensary facility could locate anywhere on this campus, um, today, um, which, I mean, today in the IG parcel, but in the BG parcel or IH parcel if rezoned. So just answering the marijuana concern. Thank you. Oh, just actually one thing quick. Um, BG, um, life science, um, lab and some things, um, that go along with lab are not allowed today in the BG district. So just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Mr. Boyven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, precinct one. Uh, my understanding is that structured parking is allowed in the, what will now be called the Innovation District. So I would strongly encourage structured parking to be utilized wherever possible. Uh, we need as much green space as we can get. You know, large paved parking lots are tremendous heat islands. Uh, we need to make every effort that we can reasonably do to fight climate change and more green space is one of the key, uh, components of that. So any development, uh, and changes like this that do allow structured parking, I would strongly hope that we use it where we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyven. Ms. Warren?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Respond to any of these.
Pardon me?
Ms. Warren, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sir. Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Warren, precinct four. Um, uh, two questions. Um, one, um, I believe this is again precinct seven, and I think that there are some neighborhoods nearby. So if there are any town meeting members that live close, I would like to hear from you, how you feel about this. And two, I, I'm sorry, did I miss the planning board votes on these 20 and 21? I apologize if I did. I, I don't recall hearing them.
The planning board voted six, one, zero in favor of article 20. And they plat- they voted one, six, zero, essentially against article 21.
Okay. Thank you.
Phyllis Newfeld?
Thank you. Phyllis Newfeld, precinct five. Um, my question is, in an attempt to consolidate two and, I guess, 10, um, the, the, the ones that are at the business side, would leases be denied as they come up to the, to the companies that are in there now? Or would rates be raised to such a level that it would be impossible to stay?
Mr. Weiss?
I apologize. I'm not sure if that was my connection or not. I only caught part of that. Um, was the question whether or not, uh, leases would be denied or rates raised to prevent leasing? Is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, yes.
Correct. So, so neither of those are, are the intended approach. Um, we've had, uh, the vacant space in the building that's there today, uh, for the retail building on the market, uh, for, for years. Uh, we've known Chuck E. Cheese was not going to remain there. Um, finding, finding groups to, um, to take that space at, at any rate has been, has been challenging. Um, and so, and, and we just recognize that, a- as we kind of said, talked all along, and I'm sure everybody in town is well-aware that the future of retail is different and the pandemic has accelerated processes and, and shopping tendencies. Um, and, and the status of a small, a small little plaza like this i- is definitely in question. So we're not looking, we weren't looking to, to prevent anyone from coming there. We just don't expect anyone to want to locate here. It's not, it's not, uh, really a prime shopping location for most users at this point.
Any follow-up to that?
No.
Ms.?
Ms. Rappaport?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, to Mr. Weiss's point, if we were to rezone, uh, one Wall Street and 20 Wall Street, it would be a destination. And therefore the, you know, the businesses that remain on 10 Wall Street and two Wall Street would be more desirable so that they could support the life science and the destination of those facilities. And that was one of the reasons why the planning board voted against rezoning 10 Wall Street and two Wall Street. Uh, the planning board just had approved back in April or May, um, a new, um, tenant Golf X, which would be a, a great contribution to the Burlington community and to any, uh, type business setting, um, you know, for entertainment pers- purposes. If, a- again, we're in support of one Wall Street, we're in support of 20 Wall Street, 10 Wall Street and two Wall Street was, was not, um, supported by the planning board because we feel like it's the chicken and the egg. We just, we just, April, the, I can't remember if it was April or May, um, approved Golf X. And if we, if we support one Wall Street and 20 Wall Street, maybe that's going to bring more small business or any type of new business to those, uh, to the BG parcel. Um, and therefore that was, that was why we had voted the decision the way that we did. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rappaport. Mr. Weiss, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, and I appreciate, uh, uh, the planning, planning board chair's comments and, and I think she's, she's right on in understanding, uh, what, uh, the board's position was on this. One Wall Street and 20 Wall Street through, um, pandemic have not been, uh, full, well, 20 Wall Street has been utilized. It's a medical office building and its activity has continued throughout the pandemic. Um, but one Wall Street has been fully occupied with office leases throughout this time, and yet it has been difficult to lease and fill the space at 10 Wall Street at the, at the retail area. Um, those, uh, two buildings, the office and medical office buildings are not enough to sustain, um, you know, multiple companies. They need to be able to, to have the support of many buildings and, and frankly, the, the residents around here going to those locations, um, and, and frequently, frequently, frequenting them, uh, often so that they can, they can remain in business. Um, a couple of, and, and converting these to life science will help keep these buildings occupied, certainly for one Wall Street. Uh, as we know, certain leases there are coming to an end. Um, but again, the density is probably likely to decrease. So the, the activity in the retail, uh, plaza, even if one and 20 become, become, uh, um, uh, more life science oriented, is not likely to be enough to sustain the retail activity. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, may I respond, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. Um, yeah, uh, the current use of one Wall Street and 20 Wall Street is not life science. We know that normal, everyday office folks are not coming back to the office as frequently as they would. So if we're rezoning and life science folks are the typical people who are going to be going to an office-type setting on a regular basis, that's going to bring that destination factor, just as you had stated in your, in your presentation. So I, I think that there is, you know, there is a valid argument that if we rezoned one Wall Street and 20 Wall Street, that, that, that we'll, we could potentially bring business. And like I said, if we just rezoned Golf X and 10 Wall Street, why are we going to rezone something that we don't know just yet? Let's bring one Wall Street and 20 Wall Street to the, you know, to the plate, rezone those and see what happens. But to rezone 10 and two at this point in time doesn't make sense. We're not going anywhere. We haven't denied. We have a great relationship. We want to continue to work with you. And, you know, once you, once you get to the point where your leases are ending in the BG district at 10 and two, come back to us. We will still work with you. We will support you. We want the business and the community, but let's not move forward, you know, let's not put the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rappaport. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jack Kelly, precinct seven. Uh, per Chris Warren's request, uh, this is an area of precinct seven where I do live relatively near these properties as the crow flies. But as the car drives, you either have to get up onto 128 or go down into Woburn in order to get into, uh, my larger neighborhood area in Wind Valley Mountain Road. Uh, those of you who have been around more than 30 years or longer might remember that Mountain Road used to come all the way through to Cambridge Street. It's when the development of that area started, and I'm talking back when there was a drive-in theater where Crossroad Shopping Center is. Uh, we worked with, the Gutierrez company did own several, much of that property at the time. We got together, had to deal with the, the state, the county and the town to basically abandon the end of Mountain Road to protect our neighborhood from such traffic. It was successful. It's done so. Uh, it added to the conservation area there off Mountain Road between Mountain Road and 128. So the typical neighborhood objection to such potential traffic doesn't really apply to my neighborhood because it's, it, it's such a diff- they, they just can't get there from these places without going onto 128 or down, uh, to, to Woburn and cut back through the neighborhood, uh, on Burlington Street. It, it's just, it, it doesn't happen to the immediate abutters. I live pretty much behind, uh, Crossroad Shopping Center where Target is. Uh, our lots there are quite deep, so there's a good separation with the- Our lots there are quite deep, so there's a good separation with the high-tension lines, which is a three-hundred-foot swath between us. I personally am not objecting to the planning board's recommendation of rezoning the one and twenty to the biotech lab-type use. I, I agree with the, the chair, Brenda Rappaport, that I, I think we should wait on two and ten to see what evolves. But, you know, to Chris Warren's request, that, that I as a butter to, or closer butter to that area, I'm not objecting to this because we are protected by the long since abandonment of that portion of Mountain Road.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Science Lecture Hall, there you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dan DiTucci, Precinct six. Can you hear me all right?
Speak up, Dan.
Dan DiTucci, Precinct six, can you hear me now?
Kind of.
How about now, wait a minute, hold on for a second. Technical difficulties. Hey, you're muted. Cream in a minute.
We can hear you fine.
Oh, it's all set? Okay, all set. Dan DiTucci, Precinct six, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I'm in support of the, of the zoning of these parcels. Town Meeting has been working on this new innovation zoning for the purpose of bringing in different types of life science businesses into the town because we think that is the future. In fact, we know it's the future. The Gutierrez Company is not a stranger to the town. They've done some very, very good work, not just down here on Wall Street, but they did a great job with Millipore Sigma, one of the largest life science companies probably in, in, in the world. And we're very fortunate to have them here in the town of Burlington. So, these people already know what they're doing. I think commercial landlords and property owners, they know what's best for their property in order to bring in the best revenue, not only for them, but also for the best taxes for us. They know that some of that office space that they have right now down on Wall Street, they know that's, little by little, that is going to diminish. There's not as a shortage of, of, of general business, retail in the town of Burlington. There's actually more than we can use. And I just think it's a, it's a good idea that if Town Meeting continues to give these landlords, property owners, give them the zoning tool that they need, I'm very successful that we will be one of the biggest players of life science in Massachusetts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DiTucci. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Scott Martin, Precinct seven. I, I guess I, I'm not sure where to start. I live near here, this area. Come down Wayside, a lot to crossover, to get onto Cambridge Street and to cross over onto Wall Street to get onto one-twenty-eight because you can't get from Middlesex Turnpike to one-twenty-eight if you wanted to a lot of the time of the year. And so, I, I guess, I don't have, I don't see a problem with rezoning one and twenty. My concern is two and ten. By leaving, I, I just don't see what the purpose of leaving part of the, that, those lots in general business. What I do see is the ability of the developer to now, in the, what's now the parking lot, to develop a, a huge building and turn the, the existing, tear the bil, existing buildings down and turn those into the parking lots. If we rezoned just two and Wall Street, and I'm not sure that that's where, what we want to do, maybe it works out great for the developer. And it may be that it would update the parcel, the, what's there and give them better arrangement of the properties. But if you're going to do that, just rezone the whole thing. Don't keep part of it BG. Just rezone two and ten to the, to the new IH. All of it, don't, don't stop there. I haven't had anybody complain from any of the, of the residents in our area that this is a problem down there. So I'm not sure that it's affecting much of us. But anyway, those are my concerns. I plan to support Article twenty, but to oppose twenty-one. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Weiss, any response?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I just did want to comment on the partial rezoning of two and ten. And, and we certainly understand the concern. I think the planning board's raised their concern. It's very similar, the concept of a, of a partial property rezoning on this front. And we would be very happy to rezone the entirety of the property to the Innovation District. Again, planning for the future. However, it creates a technical issue where the existing uses and activities in the building become non-conforming under zoning. It becomes difficult if an existing tenant wants to make a change within their property, within their, their, their use or something, it, it gets very complicated and can be very difficult to, to maintain some of that. So that's where this, this partial rezoning comes into play, and it allows for a transitional process. And we understand the concern on this, and, and we certainly recognize it. The reason we decided to press forward is because we think it's important to not have to wait until the, the retailer or restaurant uses die off. Because that's, that's the alternative here, is to wait until they can no longer be maintained. It's sustainable, and they leave or close, and we're left with the empty building to then start a three-to-five, six-year process. We just want to be able to start the planning at the same time so that we can, we can smoothly transition and keep these properties active and, and useful. Thank you.
Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Woods, Precinct seven. I, I do use, I do go to Wall Street from time to time, since I live in that area. But I don't have any issues with traffic at the present time. Question I had was the planning board. You mentioned you approved a business to go into part of the parcel on ten Wall Street. How much, I don't know if you know or Scott knows, how, how many square feet are going to be occupied by this business? And I think, Scott, you mentioned more than half of the building is currently not leased. I was just wondering how much of that space is going to be taken up by this business that's been approved by the town.
Mr. Weiss.
Sure, tha- thank you. I'm glad you're, you're heading over there and visiting the businesses, Mark. That's probably very helpful. So the new group coming in, ExGolf, is an indoor golf simulator activity center. And they will be taking about five thousand square feet, which is pretty big for that use. I think that's, that's the number, I, I'd have to look it up to confirm. And that is about half, maybe a little bit more than half of the remaining vacant space. So the property, which is a little less than half-full now, will be close to three-quarters occupied when they, when they come in. And I think they are in the process of trying to build out their space right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
You're welcome.
Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Rick Parker from Precinct seven. Like Jack Kelly, I was answering to Christine Warren's initial question about the butters. I live in the neighborhood behind, behind Jack, actually. And, and when Mountain Road was deadheaded, it sent the traffic down my street. But that's part of the deal in being collaborative in a town. What, what's good for all of us sometimes has an impact on, on a smaller segment, and that's just the way we work in a collaborative environment. With this particular property, we've done a lot of work with the town. And for those that don't know, I'm also involved with the Chamber of Commerce here in town. And eighty percent of our membership are small businesses. We've done a lot of collaboration with the Economic Development Office and, and getting that position filled here to be able to compete with other areas for the life science thriving industry that's coming in. This particular property, if you were to map it out in Burlington, outside of, of the Millipore site, this is one of the most attractive, as far as it comes from, from the life science companies, but also from the town for that quick egress to the highway to get off of the side streets. So it's, it's a minor impact in, in traffic. As far as the retail component goes, and I am, I am very sympathetic to the small business and the retailers, and I, and I hope ExGolf does a great job. But as companies look to move in here, they're looking specifically at the spending habits of, of people in the area, but also the daytime population. Now, the daytime population when ExGolf was initially planning is much different than it is now. We need to move forward and look at zones where, where, I, I'm thankful that it's been changed from IH to, to Innovation District. It helps to market it outside the area. This is a prime zone to be rezoned for Innovation District. And I think in order to fill those buildings that, that we're looking at, to have this rezoning, it's going to be a great addition to being able to have people stay in that retail area. As much as we, you know, maybe people go there once in a while. I can tell you, we've got a lot of competition from the rest of the town pulling the, the retail market in other directions. So I think that particular campus, we need to get it populated again so that ExGolf can be, can be successful and that we can, we can continue to bring small businesses into that area. Again, small businesses are hurting badly, and we need to get people back into the offices. And life sciences is one of the way to move forward. I would absolutely support this and, and move forward with, with attracting the life science companies to, to our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Hardy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mike Hardy, Precinct one. I'm, I'm trying to understand the way the, the blue and the red area work for two Wall Street and ten Wall Street because it looks like the businesses that are there now will, don't have any, won't have any parking area available to them? Or what's, I don't understand how, how they will, they'll stay in business if two and ten, the blue areas, get developed out because, because of the impact on their parking. That's, I guess, to Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. So just to be clear, the idea on either of these is that the existing businesses that are there today and ExGolf coming in can remain and, and continue. And they continue to have access and use of the parking. For commercial uses can use the parking in a commercial zone. If one zone was a residential zone, and, and Friston can probably comment and chime in on this, if one zone was a residential zone, they, they couldn't park a commercial use in that zone. But as long as it's a commercial use in either zone, they, they can still park there. So the idea of, of rezoning partial, part of a lot allows us to start the planning and maybe the reconfiguration of the buildings onsite as we, as we move forward. This is not a rezone it and we're going to be back in front of the planning board next week, next month, probably not even next year. This is, as I mentioned, this is, this is a five-to-ten-year planning process that we're just looking to get started by having the correct zoning regulations in place. But the parking and the existing uses can remain being used as they are today.
So, so if I can follow up, Mr. Moderator. Based on what you said, then, as long as the retail and the restaurant areas are remaining in business, there will be no new developments on the blue par, portions of ten and two Wall Street. Is that, is that right? You can't have both at the same time, it's one or the other. Is that, is that correct?
That's essentially correct, that we would anticipate, and this is, again, forecasting the future. As long as those businesses are continuing and, and vibrant and able to, to continue going on, there is no intent to try to raise their rents, force them out. There's no, nothing to that extent. What we are trying to do is, is anticipating that there have been struggles for those retail and restaurant tenants already. They've expressed them, they've identified them, and, and we're trying to recognize that the future may be difficult. And so as that time comes, we, we expect that they may want to downsize or change or modify, and they may leave some of the tenants in there. So we want to be able to start planning for, for the future of those use. And those two things, that planning and the existing use can coexist. As long as there are businesses in there, they need to have parking, they need to have it maintained, they need to have access and visibility. So all of that has to continue while those businesses are in place.
But, but the writing will be on the wall, and they'll be able to see it if, if they get rezoned, right? I mean.
Yeah, so. And just, Mr. Moderator, if I may continue.
Go ahead, Mr. Weiss.
And, and just to be clear, yes, the writing, the writing isn't, we're not seeking to go put the writing on the wall in front of them because, look, hey, here's what we've done. The writing is on the wall and, and being provided to us by the intent and, and response and the interest that these tenants have already expressed to us. And that has resulted in us coming forward and expressing this interest and wish with you and the town to, to do this. So we're not looking to communicate back to them something that they're not already telling us about their activity and business and, and ability to continue. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I, I find that a little confusing. So they're telling you, we need to get out of this area because businesses, this isn't the right spot for us.
Mr. Moderator. Yep. So that, it's not exactly that, that terminology. It's in, either in interest for people looking at the space and saying that this is not a preferred retail location. It is in interest and lack of customer or clientele that's, that's showing up at these, at these locations. It's recognition that the size of the restaurants may be too large for the number of customers that they're serving, and that may not be sustainable. There's no business coming to us, none of these businesses are coming to us and saying, we're done, we need, we want to leave at the moment. But there have been expressions of difficulty and perhaps lack of interest in, in continuing. Some of the leases will be expiring in the next couple of years. And we do not have interest that those will be renewed at the moment.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Hardy. Ms. Wassaf.
Hi, Gina Wassaf, Precinct, Precinct one, did you call me? I'm sorry, I, I, it wasn't clear. Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
Yes, I worked, Gina Wassaf, Precinct one. I'm actually in the life sciences industries, industry, I work in Cambridge. And I know the goal here is to provide a, a vibrant life sciences cluster. And I can tell you that one of the main reasons why it is, the life sciences are, are vibrant in Cambridge is that there's a lot of access to restaurants and coffee shops. And yes, during COVID, most people that go into Cambridge now are lab workers. And I can also tell you that those lab workers are young. The more. The more senior you get in life sciences, you get a, you you go outside of the lab. So these people, young people, are looking not just for lab work, they're also looking for an experience. Uh, a lot of business gets conducted in um, the coffee shops, and a lot of data gets discussed over lunch. Uh, even a lot of first interviews happen uh, in cafes as well. So I'm, I'm, i- is the current zoning that you have here conducive to something like this? Or or would it be limiting to just labs and that's it? And it has that been considered at all? Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Certainly, that those are very good points. And one of the things that uh, we do recognize and and think the idea of leaving some of the uh, land area available for um, those restaurant, coffee shop type uh, opportunities is actually a benefit. We do recognize that we need amenities. Uh, I think that's what you were referring to, is that any successful life science or 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 office work type location needs amenities. Burlington's doing, has done a great job in having many amenities, and we do want the amenities to uh, continue, albeit they're probably less about um, uh, you know, large restaurants that are having, have function space and more about smaller coffee shops like you had identified.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Anything further, Ms. Wassaf?
No, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Here's a theory room. We have someone there wishes to speak.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, just forgot to put the hand down.
Okay, Mr. DeBona.
Hi, Jeff DeBona, Precinct Three. Motion to move the question.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion to move the question. This will be for Article twenty. Okay, the poll is out. Anyone speak up if they do not get it. Okay, music theory room.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We are eight in favor of moving the question, zero against, zero abstain.
There was eight, zero, zero.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, that's correct.
Thank you. Science Lecture Hall.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, three in favor, zero opposed, zero abstention.
Thank you. There being seventy-two in favor, ten opposed, and five abstentions. Uh, motion to move the question passes. So now, Mr. Warfield, if you could send out a poll on question twenty.
That was twenty. This is twenty-one.
Twenty.
We're voting on.
Any question?
Article twenty. So the poll is out, everyone should have it. Here's a theory room. Do we have a vote?
Yes, we do, Mr. Moderator, thank you. We are eight in favor, zero against, zero abstain.
Thank you. Science Lecture Hall.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, we are three in favor, zero against, zero abstention.
Thank you. There being eighty in favor, four opposed, three abstentions. Article twenty passes. Okay, now we're going to move on to Article twenty-one. I will remind people the Planning Board voted one in favor, six opposed. Land use voted seven in favor, zero opposed. Are any further comments people wish to make on Article twenty-one specifically? Ms. Byer? Can I hear you, Kathy?
Can you hear me any?
Now we can.
Okay, uh, I have questions for Mr. Weiss on on this. I had looked at this before, and I certainly see uh, the advantage of having amenities there. Um, one of the things I think that many of us are confused about uh, it is looking at a parking lot that gets zoned differently from the retail space. And so I'm wondering, is there a tax advantage there? Um, or or something else that goes on? It just looks strange to to me. Um, and then with that, I'm wondering if there's an advantage to develop all of this as one area with a stage one and a stage two planned versus uh, doing it in two different stages? So one project with a stage one and stage two versus project one and project two as far as the development goes. And I I do understand that there's a a concern there about the businesses that are there right now, their ability to stay in business in the retail spot. But the the main thing that I think has most of us confused is looking at that difference of zoning in the parking lot versus the buildings. And if you could speak to that again and explain the parking lot part of it. I understand the buildings, I don't understand the parking lot. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Um, that's a very good question. I think part of the difficulty on on this one. Um, first of all, on tax or other value differences, no difference. Uh, the town and the assessors tax the property based on the use and activity, regardless of the zoning in place in the, in this particular case. As I mentioned, one Wall Street is already in currently, well, up until a few seconds ago, was, is in a split uh, zone as well. Um, i- in terms of the planning, I think exactly what you were talking about is sort of phase one, phase two, is exactly where we would like to see this go. However, we really can't start that phased or staged approach without having the zoning in place. I can't come to the Planning Board and present a plan as to how the future of the property might might look or what can happen there, because the only thing that's allowed in the BG zone is really more of the retail restaurant uses, not not a um, an IH. And then, so we need the zoning in place so that we can start the planning and and thought processes to how we, how we go forward.
Any follow up, Ms. Byer? Can I hear you? Nope. Can I hear you, Kathy?
One can hear me, so, okay.
Could hear you now.
Now you can hear me? All right, I don't, I don't know what I did differently. Um, I I just wanted to say, I think that location is prime for a full-scale life sciences development area for the town. And if it makes a difference as to whether or not this can be developed as one district versus two separate districts, then I am in favor of Article twenty-one. Thank you.
All right, I have a question that's coming through chat. Mr. Weiss, could someone build in the parking lot when zoning changes? And how would or could that affect the BG businesses currently there?
So we're, we're not gonna do anything that's gonna prevent or restrict or inhibit those businesses from continuing. In fact, we have lease obligations that allow them and mandate that we allow them to to uh, uh, continue to operate. Could we build? The idea is that we would hopefully, with the zoning change, start that process of developing plans that would envision new building, uh, maybe something like the medical office building size that could go into that, into that parking lot so that when we are ready and have a plan in place, so that when all the things come together with those leases expiring for those existing tenants that don't wanna uh, continue, we would be in a position to hopefully be also marketing to a a new user and have the zoning in place until it can go forward with construction at that point. So while, yes, technically a building could be built, we'd have to be able to maintain parking and access and and um, accessibility to the existing building. So it's really not gonna happen until those businesses are really, you know, downsized and and on their way at the, at the very end of their useful life, if you will. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I'm seeing a lot of comments that they thought they moved both questions twenty and twenty-one, but you can only do that one at a time, sorry. So question twenty-one has not been moved. We're still discussing chapter twenty-one. So I would entertain questions that only pertain to Article twenty-one. Okay? Mr. Duttucci.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Dan Duttucci, Junior, Precinct Six. Um, I I work very closely with life science companies in my business that I'm in, that I occupy in Burlington. And um, we work with a lot of life science companies. And honestly, I've been talking to three startups in the last week that are actively looking at lab space in Burlington. So a- all I can express to Tom Ening right now is that the time is now, that we have to enable, you know, our partners, uh, like the Gutierrez Company, uh, to be able to compete for this business. Because if the property is not zoned, they 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 move past it and 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 they've missed the boat. And, you know, I think everyone knows that the restaurants and a lot of the retail, they're on life support right now. So we have to get some of these types of companies in town so that we can maintain the tax revenue that we're used to, uh, and that we don't continue to have, uh, you know, issues with, uh, you know, tenants not being able to stay in these spaces. So I'm definitely in support of of Article twenty-one.
Thank you. Mr. Davison.
Jeff Davison, Precinct Two. As a member of Ways and Means, I'd like to speak in favor of this article. You know, the last two budget seasons, we've spent significant time uh, trying to figure out what we were gonna cut and how we were gonna deal with diminished revenue. Um, we're still figuring out what we're gonna do for the next two or three years as we look at. We're not sure when, when our revenue's gonna come back. Everything else this body votes on, other than these kinds of things, are spending money. And and we need to keep in mind that all of the things we talk about, we need to do more of, or we need to do better, or we don't need to cut, we have to figure out how to fund that. So here we have one of our, our good corporate residents, the Tierra's Company, who who have been good to the town, and and I think we have a very good relationship. And what they're asking for is agility. They're asking to be able to plan for the future and move forward. If if we vote for this or we don't vote for this, it's, as we drive around Burlington, it's not going to make a change in any of our lives. If we don't vote for it, we've just slowed down progress that will help the town continue in the way that we have been in the past. We have to acknowledge that our retail base is going to change. I think people have said that, I agree. You can't say it enough when you start looking at our tax base and in trying to figure out how we're gonna continue to fund all of the things we do here um, for the tax rate that we all enjoy as residents. So I'm strongly in favor of this. We have to give them the agility to develop any spaces that we have to try to bring in this, this new component. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davison. Mr. Glantz.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Noel Glantz, Precinct One. Um, first a question, then a comment. Um, but first the question, um, I'm guessing this is for Ms. Kastner. Um, are the types of uses that was mentioned earlier that might be ancillary to a life sciences type development such as uh, coffee shops, small restaurants, um, other types of quote-unquote amenities? And I think there's lots of those in town, but for it to be walkable from the R and D and lab space, it sounds like it would be ideal. Um, are those types of uses not allowed in the innovation uh, zone?
Ms. Kastner.
Um, I tell you, these types of BG uses, um, restaurants, coffee shops, um, fitness are not currently allowed in um, the uh, the new Innovation District. Uh, it is something that's under discussion that you might see in the future to try to fi- find a way to add amenities, in better add amenities in this district. But today, that is not the case. Um.
Understood, thank you. Um, if I may continue, Mr. Moderator. Um, so my comment is, it sounds like we missed the boat a little bit on that. And so I'm glad to hear that you're looking at it, but for the future. So I think for those properties, um, certainly got me a bit befuddled, the idea of zoning the parking lot differently and to try to future-proof, but still keep the things there, and you don't wanna make them non-conforming. Um, but then this whole thing of you wanna add, include uses that are not allowed in the Innovation District, like having a coffee shop. Um, i- it seems like these properties, it's not really a fully fleshed out plan here, unfortunately. I mean, I love the idea of moving forward. However, I I don't think I can support it the way it is. Um, uh, maybe if you rezone fully one of the properties and not rezone at all the other of the properties, and that can be where the amenities are, where they're adjacent to the life sciences complex. Something like that maybe could work. Um, but um, Um, but, um, you know, and maybe in the future when the zoning laws change and we allow to have, um, uh, allow to have ancillary uses in the Innovation District that are ancillary to the primary innovation use. Um, you know, maybe that can work in the future, but you know, for right now, I, I think that this splitting up with the parking lot, it just doesn't seem to work. Um, and, um, yeah, I, I, I mean, it's unfortunate because I, I, I like the idea of moving forward with this, but I don't think in the current way it's structured, it, it works. Thank you.
So Weiss, the comment.
Uh, yeah, just to, uh, follow up on the one piece of that. I, I think the idea of rezoning, um, one of the two properties and not the other would be great. However, the buildings are where they are today, and that's what drives the, the, um, the need to keep the buildings within the, the BG zone. Um, and again, the, the last item, uh, is, is, and I think, uh, it was Mr. Davison who, who mentioned this. This is about, uh, flexibility, responsiveness, and, and, um, and trying to future-proof, uh, the, the, the site to be able to plan, plan this out. Um, the, the comments that, uh, Mr. Glantz just had would be great if the buildings were empty, nobody was there. We could rezone it and, and, and change around property lines and move structures and all of that. But we're not in that position as of yet, so we are trying to step our way there by allowing the existing uses to, to continue, and it does provide an area for amenity space for life science, for the life science campus. Thank you.
Music Theory Room.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Dave Adella, Precinct One, please move the question. Couple of seconds from Music Theory as well.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. Could you repeat, please?
I would like to move the question, Mr. Moderator, thank you.
Got it, I hear it now.
And, and there's been a second from the Music Theory Room.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to move the question. Amy, if you could send out a poll for that, please. Okay, can I get a vote from the Music Theory Room, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, eight in favor, zero abstain, zero against.
Thank you. Science Lecture Hall.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, three in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions.
Thank you. Sixty-four. There being sixty-five in favor, eleven opposed, and six abstentions. The motion to move the question has been passed. Brings us to voting on the question on Article Twenty-one, please. Hey, Music Theory Room, a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We are six in favor, two against, zero abstain.
Thank you. Science Lecture Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One in favor, two against, zero abstention.
Thank you. There being fifty-five in favor, twenty-seven opposed, and five abstentions. Motion just carries.
Motion to adjourn.
I hear a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Anybody opposed? Anybody in favor?
Can you just repeat the, whether that passed or failed, please?
Repeat what? It passed.
It did pass, thank you.
Did it? The numbers you gave didn't suggest it was two-thirds, though.
Fifty, fifty-five in favor, twenty-seven opposed.
Do the five abstentions not count in the total?
Nope.
Okay.
You need a calculator, John?
Uh, no, I was including the five abstentions, in which case it wouldn't have been two-thirds.
Okay. Um, yeah, we have, yeah, please send out a poll. We have a motion to adjourn. Vote. Give them ten seconds. I can't decide whether they want to go home or not.
We are already home.
Exactly. Okay, Music Theory Room, do you want to go home? That's unanimous. Science Lecture Hall.
We're out of here.
We had another unanimous. How the vote come out? Well, we have forty-eight in favor, and we actually have three people abstaining. So those pe- three people can stay here, keep their computers on. We're adjourned. Thank you for your attention tonight.
Good night.
Thank you.